Approved agenda, approved minutes of October 28th for sewer commission meeting. Minutes of October 28th for select board meeting. Warrants, correspondence, AARP grant. Planning Commission Board members. Salt pricing 2021-22. Employee benefits, town hall update. Public, public comment adjourned. Can I entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of minutes of October 28th sewer commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes of October 28th select board meeting.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Warrants. Accounts payable for 11,521, this is for the town hall. For nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Accounts payable for 11,521 for seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty cents. Can I entertain a motion for accounts payable?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Payroll warrant for 11,521 for twelve thousand forty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Mike, you're in that for your stipend for select board and zoning. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed.
Restain.
Stain, thank you, Mike. Okay. Um, just so everybody remembers, you can go on our website and the town office and see the accounts payable and the payroll warrant. So I'd like to open up for questions regarding those three. Megan?
There's no one there.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to correspondence. So I received an email from Wendy Hopkins, she's on the Housack River Watershed Association Board. They're very interested in the progress of the cleanup of the racetrack. Couple of her questions is who's the owner? Are the taxes up to date? Could the site be listed as a brownfield and to get federal money for the cleanup? Have we heard anything back from the state of the Division of Safety for the fire?
No, we haven't heard anything back from fire and safety. Um. I'll try to remember to email them tomorrow.
Okay. So I just want to-
Actually, you know what, I'm gonna send Rebecca a message right now.
Okay. So I just want to say that, um-
To remind me.
All right. The owner is Solo, correct?
Steven Solar.
Solar?
S-O-L-E-R.
Okay. And as far as I know, the taxes are paid up, I don't know if he's paid this year's yet. Um, could the site be listed as a brownfield? I don't have the answer to that.
We can look into that.
We can look into that, absolutely. But people have to remember that this is a privately owned. And we will do whatever we can to work with the owner to help get that cleaned up.
Can I say, if I could, just a quick point of clarification?
Sure.
Is Philair is not really the owner, he's the manager of the LLC that owns it.
That's true.
All right. And do we know the name of the LLC?
I think it's Green Mountain LLC.
I believe it was, I believe it was.
So there's numerous people involved and, um, we're doing the best we can. And we're not gonna let it sit. We're just waiting to hear back from the Division of Safety, Fire and Safety from the state.
All right, Rebecca will remind me tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll never remember.
All right, second is Leonard Cody, he asked again about the chicken or the fowl ordinance. How do we go about doing that? Do we have to add it to the bylaws? Because he really can't do anything about the chickens or the fowls. Birds being off of their property.
I think we make an ordinance for, uh-
I don't think it goes into the bylaws. Um. I don't think it would go into the zoning bylaws or anything, I think it would be an ordinance like the, the traffic ordinance. I would have to assume.
And that would have to be like wait 60 days and somebody could petition it? And then once? Right?
Right, right. I, so I think that's something that we can, um, have. We can have Megan look into the legal process. Um. On, on how to do that.
Okay, so can we put that on our next meeting, please?
Megan, can you look into, um, what we would need to do for an ordinance on, um, fowl? Um. I probably, probably, I don't think we have an ordinance on any animals.
I was just gonna say, maybe we oughta look at it.
Probably should look at all of it because, because what if someone were to have free range pigs? Because that's, that's, you know, that is out there, um, you know, you could have free range beef type things, I know.
Yep.
You know, I mean, I know all west they have free range animals, so. I think that's something, probably just free range in general, Megan. Can you look into that for us, please?
Okay, no problem, we'll work on it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Megan. Okay, that was, um, it for correspondence.
So were you gonna let her know that we're gonna work on that?
Yes.
Okay.
I told her I was gonna definitely bring it up tonight and, um, that we'll work on it. Okay, the AARP grant, Tim?
Yeah, so Parks and Rec wanted me to bring it to your attention that they would like your approval to apply. For an AARP Vermont winter placemaking grant, which is due 11/12, November 12th. And they looking to seek funds, which should be about four thousand dollars if they're successful, to help Margaret Cody with the landscaping at the new town hall, as well as a few other, um, initiatives that they have. Uh, including designing and planning workshops at the library during this winter, a seed library, and some benches or other seating.
Okay, I have no problem with that, still moved.
Also can it?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you.
And real quick, if I can add in relation to grants, is we, um, submitted the municipal planning grant.
Oh nice.
On Monday.
Very nice.
I was due the 17th, right? Is that correct?
Was that this, it was due Monday, whatever day, I just don't know.
Monday was the first, okay, maybe I guess it was the first.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, nice.
Then, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Planning Commission Board members. Um, John, was she? Um, he sent a letter into everybody? Everybody read it, an email?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to pop John's? Please.
Didn't we also have a letter of interest for?
We did.
Planning Commission?
And somebody that's-
Oh, did we?
That still is posted until next week.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we have one more week, correct? Yep, okay. So John, could you just? Brief us a little bit on your email, because I don't have it in front of me.
Uh, basically, it's just a, um, generalize it, we're, we have two people who haven't been showing up consecutively, so. Um, board talked about it, uh, Tuesday and just said that, um, we're looking at if we can have a approval or if you guys could get those two off of the board, so we could at least look at someone else, because we're just having, you know, we're just squeaking by right now and keeping a quorum.
So it's a five board? Or a seven? Oh, nine?
Yeah.
The planning commission.
Yeah.
Commission.
And it's, two are just haven't been showing up at all, so no, no reasons or anything for not being there, so. I mean, if they want to come back and apply, but as long as they're gonna show up, you know, if there's something down the road they want to do, that's fine, but it's just right now, we want to try to get.
So you have one position open, is that correct? So that brings you down to eight. So minus the two that don't show up, so that means that you have six people? Is that correct? Are the six people showing up?
Just barely.
Just barely.
Had five last week.
Yep, we had five of them.
One had to-
We're just squeaking the corner.
Counting votes. So we had five people out of the, well, we, we got two that don't show up anyway.
Right.
We had, we had five, but that wasn't enough.
And just, just to be perfectly clear, um, as, because you're on that board, right Ronnie?
Yes, I am.
So as the ex-official member, he does count as the quorum. He just doesn't have a voting power. But he does count as a quorum.
So, but unfortunately, it means that you have a quorum, but if anything comes up-
It was only five of us.
Right.
If there's, if there's five of you and one can't vote, you don't-
Brings you down to four.
Still don't meet.
By the state, by the state regs, they can have their meeting, Bob.
They can have their meeting, but they can't vote on it.
Can't vote on the minutes, right.
So, um-
Right, that's what I meant, I'm sorry, thank you for clearing that up.
And then, uh, I did have a question of, has anybody reached out to the two that aren't showing and find out what their intentions are?
I don't know, um, that was when Tiffany was doing it, I, I think she had talked to Megan, I don't know for sure myself. I'd have to check with Megan on it, but.
Megan, do you know if any letters or phone calls were sent out to those two people?
Yes, I've tried to reach out to the members several times.
You've received no response?
No.
Okay.
I did receive a response from one of the two, um, that they weren't getting, wanting to be able to make the last meeting.
Okay.
That's the only, yeah, that's the only-
What is, does anybody know what the process is for removing people from a commissioner aboard?
Well, the deal is to have a policy that if you missed three, three in a row or whatever.
Three consecutive?
You know, send you on your way, that, that used to be. I don't know what the policy is now, but that-
They send the word up to us and then we-
Yeah, bring it up and say, well, look, we have some people that don't want to show up.
Right.
And all, all we're interested in is a quorum.
Right, so I understand that, so would it be beneficial if we had the board send those two people a letter, asking them if they're gonna fulfill their agreement? If not, to please resign, so we can fill those seats with somebody?
That sounds like a very good suggestion.
How, how many months or meetings have they missed?
Uh.
Quite a few.
Altogether, I mean consecutively.
Have they been to any?
We had-
Not for quite a while.
Okay.
One of those people only went to one meeting.
Yeah, okay.
All right, then they-
I, I would say if the, the person who's only been to one meeting, I would say as a board, we remove them now.
Right.
And then we open up, we either do one or two things, in my opinion. We knock the number of board members or commission members down to where it's easier to have a quorum. We go from nine to seven, or those numbers just pop into my head. And then we, we remove that one person who's been to one meeting in a year, or however long it's been. And then the person who said they couldn't make the last one, I assume it's probably not the same person. Um. Then we send them a letter and say, hey, what are your intentions? And then, then at that point, we can remove them.
Okay, so-
To be fair about it, as far as letting people on these things.
Right.
But Ronnie, if they're not showing up, how much more fair do you think?
That's what I was gonna say, they have to show up.
Yeah.
Make a quorum.
And if they've missed more than three consecutive meetings, I mean-
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
I mean, when there's two different, we gotta separate the issues, right?
I understand.
Are we removing people that, that aren't showing up? And we, we really do owe it to them, even if we, even if we believe there's no excuse, there may be. Let's, let's find out from them why they're not showing up. If they don't answer the question, then, then we remove them. But the, and the second step for that is change the number, and I think, I think first, there may be other people in town who want to serve on that commission.
If there's enough interest in the thing to keep it at nine, it should stay at nine.
That's my, that is my point.
I don't mind dropping it.
And we as a board, we're talking down there, saying if we let it go for another, because the, the stuff's coming up, we'll see if there's only gonna be one person that ever applies for it, or if we had more. If we had more, that would be good, we could actually-
Put two or three people on.
Put more in, but, um, if only one's applying, I mean, that was, that's gonna be a decision at that point.
All right.
I mean, we could wait till our next meeting next month to see.
And when is your meetings?
It'll be-
Is it the first, second?
First, it's the first week.
The first week of the month, okay. So why don't we do that suggestion that I made? Why don't we send out letters? And see if we get a response, put it on our next meeting. And if we don't hear back from either one of them, then we can remove them and move forward? Does that sound fair?
Sounds logical.
Logical, is everybody okay with that? Do we need a motion or anything?
I don't think so, I think we just need to, we'll need a motion when we, when we decide to remove.
Okay, Tim, would you work with Megan on that letter and, from the board and?
Sure.
And I'll stop by and sign it, or Mike can sign it, and we'll send it right out to those two people. Does that sound fair?
That sounds good.
Okay, anything else?
As you mentioned, we're just trying to get, so we can make sure we keep it, if somebody else misses, we're gonna be-
Sweet, huh?
Not having one.
Okay.
And nothing wrong with calling them also, I mean, a, a letter is good, because then it's official.
Right.
There's nothing, nothing preventing us from-
I would hope that if somebody had a medical issue or something, they would let somebody know.
Right.
You know, certainly if there's a medical issue.
There's been a lot of meetings, so.
I mean, it's one thing if somebody missed a meeting, but if you've got to have some other stuff going on on the side and they were helping you work that, at least they're still being involved, but if they're not being involved at all, um-
Right.
I guess that's-
I think until we hear from them, it's, we're all speculating.
Right, right, that's right.
So, um, I mean, there could be reasons they couldn't get ahold of us, I, I don't know.
Right. Okay.
Kidnapped and they- There could be a reason, we need to talk to them.
Turkeys.
Thank you so much for coming in, hopefully we can get this straightened out for you.
Appreciate it, thank you guys.
We appreciate all the work that you do, thank you.
You guys have a good night too.
You as well, thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, moving on to salt prices. Joel sent an email to everybody about the salt prices for the, um, 2021 and 22. Um, American rock was seventy-three dollars per ton. Morton salt was eighty-one fifty-five, and Apalachee salt was eighty-four. Joel is recommending to go with American for seventy-three.
A commotion to follow our road forming recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to, um, employee benefits, Tim?
Yeah. We've had inquiries from, you know, we heard it a few weeks ago, we went over the policy about vision. And there's been some other interest in dental. And so, um, what I did is I reached out to VLCT to get prices for those types of, um, benefits added to the, what we currently offer, which is health insurance. And in amongst doing that as well, um, they spoke to me VLCT in regards to short term and long term disability. So I received quotes on that as well, and that's in this piece of paper that I sent around earlier with the breakdown. Um, well, we want to make sure we're evaluating with each one of these, so it's not a whole package deal, there's, each of those is something that we can determine whether we want to offer or not. And we'll go through each one, and what we want to make sure we're understanding is, one, do we want to offer it? Two, who will be covered? And then what is the contribution? If we're able to adjust that for each one, if this is something we want to move forward with. So for instance, dental insurance. Now, what I will say with dental and eye insurance as a caveat, is MVP also offers plans in addition to these that I quoted, I didn't go down that route when I was getting pricing, because you have to have health insurance. So if you didn't have an MVP, if you weren't signed up for health insurance, you couldn't even have dental.
You can't get a rider from them.
Right, right, so what I did is I went through the VLCT to get the policies that they offer that are all standalones essentially, so they can all sit on their own. For dental insurance, um, the way I catered this is I made this, um, best case for the employee, worst case cost wise for the town, so I wanted us to make sure we were looking at the worst case for, for what it would cost us. And if we change that, then it would only allow that cost to go smaller. Good, okay. So for dental insurance, um, the plan I chose, there was three you could choose from, I chose the one that's the most, um, often picked by other municipalities, which is the second, sort of the middle of the road plan. It, what they require is that you have to pay the premium for all full-time employees who are eligible. And it lines up with our personnel policy, that's sort of why we had to do that first. And then we could do this, because now we have in our policy that full-time employees and elected officials, if they choose, and if it's granted, may have insurance. So what that means for us is we currently have eleven full-time employees, um, including Julie and Ellen, who would, we would have to cover the premium for at this point. Okay? Um, what I've done on here is there's one per, basically, you know, the way we have it now is the other road, the general, and then the wastewater. For each of those categories, I have one person who's getting double coverage for them and then their spouse. Only to make it look representative of what may possibly happen. I didn't want to keep it exactly where we were at in case somewhat, all of a sudden everyone signs up type of thing. That brings us to, um, six thousand and sixty-nine dollars, basically, if we were to offer dental or dental insurance to those employees.
And that's paying one hundred percent?
Correct, so now the way it works is, is we're required to pay one hundred percent of the employee, but we can adjust what we pay for any additional dependence on that person's plan.
But we don't pay a hundred percent of the health insurance.
Right, sixty-six to search.
Right.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm making a point on that, that's all.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's true, but we're, we are required in this plan to pay the full hundred percent.
Plan holder.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
But we're not required to offer it. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, it's if you, if you choose-
If you offer it at all, we can't offer it at a discount, we have to either pay the entire, pay the full boat for dental vision, limited, uh, standard, limited life and accidental death and disability.
No, 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 no.
Or we don't offer it.
Because I know-
No, he's just saying that we have to pay a hundred percent of the dental.
Right.
They don't have a plan where it's like eighty, twenty?
No, so all of those, so when it comes to the contribution, that's up to the town to decide for these plans, except for the dental one. That's how they keep the premium as low as they're able to, is because they require the full-time employees, um, to have coverage.
So if we say yes, that we're gonna take the dental insurance, and we're gonna pay one hundred percent of the premium, and we have eleven full-time employees that can take it and say only five take it, are you saying that we have to pay for all eleven?
Yes.
Even though six of them are not taking it?
They would all have dental insurance.
They all fall under the, the main policy.
Yes.
Underwriters.
Because they could have insurance through their spouse or something.
Could, yes.
And in the state of Vermont, and I know this is true, because it's happened to me. My husband has insurance, and I was on his insurance, but because there's a new law in the state of Vermont, if your spouse works somewhere where it's offered, they no longer have to carry you. And they dropped me, and I had to pick up my own insurance.
Health insurance, though.
Correct, yes.
Not dental and eye.
Right. That I do pay for myself. Okay, just so that you know that that's out there.
Right.
Right.
It's due to.
Right, but I think that, that only does apply to health.
Health insurance, okay.
Right, we can verify that, that's definitely something to check on.
Okay. I just find it hard to swallow that maybe we have to pay for everybody and only like five or six people take it.
Yes.
That's a little hard to swallow.
Yep, I hear you, yep. Yep, but that, that's not something that we have any control over.
I understand what you're saying.
Yep, yep.
The only control we have is offer it or not offer it.
Correct.
We offer it, is that correct?
So the way it could work is we would offer it, and yes, all in full-time employees would have dental insurance. However, if any of those employees wanted to add their spouse or add their kids, we could say that's up to you as a self, self-pay.
Right, right, but, but, but just-
As far as their insurance period, there are liability of us.
Correct.
Yep.
Not their children.
Right.
Or what have you, that's what we're talking, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just curious.
So, so we don't, I'm sorry, we don't currently, we don't currently cover dental, is that correct?
Correct, the only thing that the town offers now is health insurance.
Health insurance, yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's fine. So basically, if it costs the town thirty dollars a month for dental insurance, and we were going to say, we're going to give, allow family members or spouses or kids or whatever, then, then that person would have to pay thirty dollars a month. If we set it up that way, when we could set it up any way we want, that person would have the option to pay the thirty dollars a month for their family member.
Right, so it's, right, since you look at the dental-
Percentage of it.
If you look at the dental, right, you could do, if you look at the dental insurance piece, and you see the single two people in family.
Right.
So let's say, for instance, there's a family, it's one twenty-three thirty a month.
Right.
Town would pay thirty-seven dollars, and then they would pay the difference in order to have family coverage.
Okay. Okay, I see that, yeah, I saw that, I was just trying to simplify it.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Where did you throw the disability in there?
That's in a difference.
Well, hang on, where's this coming from?
We're just on dental right now.
No, we're working on it.
Sound dental.
Because normally disability is, if, if I want disability insurance, I gotta pay for that.
That's correct.
It's not offered by the state. It's through an underwriter of the same-
Correct.
Thing or Aflac, but.
Yes.
On the dental, it says here, E, I assume E plus SP equals employee plus spouse. So, but I thought we were saying that the, this was just for the employee, if they wanted to do their family, the family would have to pay for it.
Well, we haven't decided that.
Yeah, that hasn't been decided.
So first of all, we need to decide if we want to carry it or not.
Yes.
And to offer to the employees.
Right.
So it's gonna cost yearly six thousand sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for eleven full-time.
Well, in year one.
Employees in year one.
You got eleven full-time employees?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yep.
And we got the road crew, and we got a couple down the sewer pipe, right?
You have Tim, and you have Megan, and you have Ellen, and you have Julie.
Yeah.
There you go.
They're all listed on the left.
Five and three is eight. And you got Megan and Joe, all right.
Eleven, there's eleven, yep.
Okay, just curious.
Yep.
We said if we offer, if we offer it, we have to pay for it for all of our employees.
Correct.
Whether they opt to do it or not.
Correct.
We don't currently provide it.
Correct, no.
My, my opinion on-
Why would they do it like that?
Yeah, I don't understand.
I don't understand that either, I would think that you'd have to pay the premium for the people that chose it.
Correct.
Not to pay for eleven people and only five people use it.
Plus it's not split, it, it's all goes to the town. Plus it's not split. It it's all goes to the town.
Right, that that, but I guess that part, we, the town has to pay for it upfront. We can choose to take and make it an eighty twenty or whatever.
Not for dental.
Not for the cost of the employee.
No, not for the employee. We pay one hundred percent for the employee.
Alright, I just, just.
Right.
I'm gonna.
And we don't have to make decisions tonight. Like you can ask questions, we can get the answers, so.
Did you poll anybody to see if they would want dental insurance? Did you poll anybody, any of the eleven?
I spoke on side conversations. I did not like send up last email.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I guess that's one thing we should do.
But I would send an email out and say, would you be interested if it was offered to you dental? Would you take it or do you already have it?
Okay.
So let me ask a question, Tim. Is the eye insurance set up the same? We have to pay a hundred percent?
No, so the so the eye insurance. Let me write my notes really fast. The eye insurance is voluntary only, so that means only the people who want it sign up and get it. And there's no stipulation on how it's paid or not paid by the town.
Right.
So on here, what I did is I assumed the town paid everything, just so you would have the idea of how much it costs.
Worst case scenario.
Yes.
No, that's fine.
Yes.
And so, uh. Sorry. So the one thousand four hundred eighty seven dollars and fifty two cents for vision for the eye, uh, for the eye coverage is all eleven? That's not a piece.
No, that's eleven.
No, so I did, I included, if everyone took it, plus one additional person per group. Right.
So so I just broke that down. So I I took the dental insurance at the six thousand sixty nine, added the fourteen eighty seven, broke it down by eleven. That's and and so if we if we covered a hundred percent of the dental, which we have to.
Yeah.
For the employees, and we covered a hundred percent of the eye insurance, that's six hundred and eighty seven bucks.
Per employee.
Roughly, per employee, per year.
Per year.
To have that, to have that perk, you know, to to put it down in the.
Yeah, yeah, man. And to be clear, he's not suggesting that we do a hundred. He did wanted to show you.
No, but he's giving us.
Right, so that that's and that's why, you know, right, so we could do it on a on a, we could do, the dental, we have to pay a hundred percent.
Yeah.
The eye insurance, we don't. So we could do the eye insurance, which is relatively cheap, so I wouldn't even do it that way, but we could do it the same way we do the health insurance, the sixty six percent. And they pay the other percentage.
We chose.
If we chose to do that. I was just breaking it down into layman's terms, Bob, so that so that we could kind of look at it, because when you look at it as seventy five hundred bucks or whatever it is.
Right, so they're.
Seventy six hundred.
So and you're looking at this sheet, Bob, which gives that. So if 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 this sheet, as it is now, was fully implemented, it would cost the town seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy one dollars.
Yeah, that was, I understand.
More than what we're paying now for insurance.
Correct, and that includes.
That's with the disability, though.
Correct, that's everything.
Provide that by eleven.
And that includes the.
Thank you.
Change in the health insurance premium for this year, which is a thousand dollars.
I have to say.
A thousand dollars?
Nice, huh?
Generally speaking, I've never worked for a company where I didn't have to pitch in any one of these things.
Correct.
Correct.
They've covered a hundred percent, except except the Navy.
Yeah, something service, yeah, you're right.
But then they also pulled my wits apiece against my will.
Didn't want you to get murdered.
Well, my my gut feeling, it's not my gut feeling, excuse me, my feeling on on the insurance portion of this on the surface is that, and and I'm looking at it from, um. I'm looking at it from our wastewater treatment and our and our road crew facility people more than, um. It's it's hard and it's gonna be extremely hard, trust me. CDL laws are changing.
Yeah.
February, on February twenty second, they changed totally. So in order to get a quality employee that's gonna stay long term, you either gotta increase your pay, I think substantially. Or you offer some more benefits. And I think dental is is a huge um perk, huge for for an employee. And I think I think paying the dental for for our employees and the employee having the option to pay the the difference to add their family or their spouse, I think that should be up to them. Okay, the eye insurance is relatively inexpensive. Um, and I'm not sure that I would even worry about breaking that down right now, but I think I think we have to look at this long term because our our road crew, they're they're not getting any younger. And there, you know, one of our, one of our wastewater treatment facility operators is not getting any younger and we're gonna have to try to bring quality people and and my my goal would be to bring them in long term. Not somebody that's gonna work here for a year or two years.
Right.
I.
Get their teeth.
I agree. I I agree that we need to do something to to make sure that we're keeping our employees, but then there's also the argument that that one is not having any skin in the game is gonna change behavior. And if if, let's say, every employee in Vermont at all these towns were were to take the one hundred percent. At one hundred percent, it changes your calculus as to whether or not you're going to go to the dentist or whether or not you gotta go to the doctor or whether you're going to seek out those services. If they're free, why not? And that's gonna increase the cost year over year, and that's what's gonna happen. I mean, that's absolutely gonna happen.
Absolute fact.
Yeah, that's that's true. It changes behavior.
I worked in a place where they offered dental insurance and everybody went to the dentist.
You need to.
They never went.
I I think we, I think they have to have some skin in the game. We, I I wanna offer them something, but it that the, but the dental, the way the rules are written, just bugs the head out of me, is that we can't even make it, uh. If we offer the dental, it's a hundred percent and that's.
I'm I know one thing, I'm not shoveling the roads.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
That's good for you to say that. It's good for you to say that.
I'm not going out on a shovel. I'll drive the truck if you wanna fling the sand around.
If it's, if that's gonna be the difference between keeping somebody or not keeping somebody, I would rather pay them more than to have them get free.
I'd rather have them have their own business.
Yeah, you need, I think on any of these, and it bugs me that the state has has kind of forced our hand, either we can do it or either we do it and we pay a hundred percent or we don't do it.
I've never heard of that nonsense of a hundred percent. It's usually like eighty twenty or something, but.
Here's the sheet.
I agree. I understand that you looked through it and everything, that's.
The other option for dental is we could look into the dental offered by MVP and if you want dental insurance, you have to have the MVP piece. I don't know how, I don't know what the rates are and I don't know how it works, so I'd have to.
Well, I'm saying, so so I just did a little bit more math. If we were to raise our employees wages by two dollars an hour times forty hours a week, times fifty two weeks, it's forty one hundred dollars versus.
Plus tax, you have to add.
Well, that's wages only, forty one hundred.
And beamers and all that.
Yeah, that's right. So if we were to offer the insurance, I mean, they're gonna get a raise of some sort anyway, let's face it, right, cause it's just what happens.
They get a raise every year with insurance, no matter whether they like it or not. Whether we give them a raise or not, they get a raise.
But people don't look at benefits as a raise.
Insurance works that way.
I know that and I understand that, but I'm telling you as.
I know what you're telling me.
People don't.
Saying is, they get a raise, period.
Think of it as a raise when they have benefits.
Well, they need to understand that's part of it.
That's right.
The fans pay for it all, right?
And 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 if we we offered this plan here, and I'm and I'm not saying we offer this plan, I'm saying, okay, we look at the MVP portion and we do something different, we can certainly look into different things. But if we offered a hundred percent of these across the board, it's six hundred and eighty dollars an employee versus four grand.
Yeah.
Do the math.
Oh, it's not.
That's.
But we're not gonna decide tonight. We can think about it and we can do some more.
Comparing that to a pay raise, I don't think is a valid comparison, because.
We don't use two dollars an hour.
All I'm saying, yeah, but all I'm saying is to get a CDL qualified driver after February twenty second, the the CDL qualifications change drastically. Like, it's it's incredible, the changes that happen on February twenty second. So in order for someone to obtain their CDL now, it's it's hard enough, you know, and there's there's a process. After the twenty second of February, you have to have a federally certified instructor. You have to, that instructor has to have a federally certified training facility to to train their drivers, okay? This is not, this is something we really need to thinking about, because I'm pretty sure we don't wanna bunch of one tons running around trying to sand and salt and plow and haul gravel.
Like that a few years ago.
So, Tim, I know this is a lot of work, but could you um look into the Delta Dental? I mean, excuse me, the MVP?
Yep, yep.
And see if there's any kind of program out there where it could be like eighty twenty or something. Or even just paying for the ones that accept it, not the whole eleven, if only five people take it.
I mean, even even where I work, there's a limit on how much you can use, right?
Right, there's a there's a cap on it.
There's a cap on how much you can use and as I get older, I get closer to that cap.
Well, now they even, they they used to give you two free cleanings a year, but that pulls, that gets pulled out of that cap now.
Yeah, you only allow one.
State insurance.
Yep.
So.
Okay, Tim, thank you. If you would just check into that. Alright, and then we went from I down to um short term and long term life option.
So are there any questions on?
I did.
I thought it was pretty well simple and it was kind of cheap. That person could only, like, if only five people wanted to take it, they could take it and we only have to pay for those five people, is that correct? Um, we could also offer it, but have the employee pay for it, correct?
Well, you could, right.
A portion.
Or a portion.
Or a portion. I think I carry it through Stewards and I only pay, I think it's five eighty five a week or something like that.
Jesus Christ, only nine dollars a month here.
I must be getting screwed.
But I I mean, it's pretty standard to go one third, two thirds, kind of like the health insurance.
Right.
And I think if we're offering this, any of these, where we can, I think the one third, two third is just about what every employee pays everywhere.
Right.
Pretty standard.
On twenty hours a minimum, that's gonna increase the number of employees also.
So.
I'm reading that.
Follow the same pattern as health insurance. What's that change?
The the twenty hour minimum, that's gonna increase the number of people eligible for that versus.
So that's, we're talking about eye insurance, not disability. Yep, yep, yep.
Disability.
You'd like that disability.
Yeah.
Mentioned disability.
I mentioned disability. I thought we were done with I, I'm sorry.
Alright.
I'm stirring the pot again, Mike, what the heck?
I don't mean to, I don't mean to go backwards here, but um on on the health insurance, do, what do we offer today? I mean, I know we offer the, it's it's one third, two thirds, right?
Yeah.
Is that employee only?
No, that's.
That's for any.
Up to anything, family, up to the family plan, any plan, any plan chosen.
Yeah, we pay two thirds.
Okay, I got you, and then the different plans for here.
Right, I'm concerned.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Okay.
I like to, you know, like to, you know, even the eye stuff is, what what are you gonna do, an eye doctor every six weeks or whatever, you know?
No, everybody should go once a year and if you're on CDL, isn't it once a year? Or is it more?
And they can, they can get an eye exam, that's right. They may not need anything else.
Right.
Maybe all they need is an eye exam. All I'm saying is, you know, and and also there should be something contributory from the person getting it.
Oh, I agree.
Wait, well, just remember, these are the, these are very similar, like, to the health insurance, where you go and there's a copay and there's an, you know.
Right.
That's good.
Right, their their whole entire visit is not covered by the town. This is just, or by that insurance plan, this is just offering a potential for them to have insurance.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Now we can move on to short term, long term disability.
Right, so, um. Where to start on that? So the these plans um that I had quoted again is for all full time employees. And honestly, I do, I'll have to go back and ask, cause I don't off the top of my head remember on the long term if if you can do a share thing.
Well, I didn't know if this was on the job injury or say you went home and decided to rake your roof off in the snow.
So, well, it's anything, the way I understand it is, so the long term and the short term disability, what what sparked my interest in pursuing this was, one, the age of our workforce.
Yes.
And the very recent situation we have with Julie, those types of things would fall under this. And when I spoke to Jill at VLCT and I kind of gave you that little blurb, and that was the reason she always encourages towns to consider it seriously, because when you have someone who's an integral part of your team, you don't wanna let them go in a situation like that. You wanna work with them and what what this does is takes that burden off the town if that event should happen, because then it's all managed by the insurance company, your medical situation, and they're getting a an income, sixty percent of their income. And then the town can focus on either filling the role temporarily without having to cover having two people.
Because we pay workman's comp insurance also, that's that's, I guess, is where I'm.
Well, workman's.
Workman's comp is if they get hurt on a job.
Right.
Well, that's what, that's what I was asking, if this was on the job stuff or is this at home stuff?
It's anything.
It could be home.
That's where I was going with that.
Yeah.
Usually most places will um give you a short term disability, they'll pay for that and give you um, and then you have to pay for long term.
The option, right.
Option, yeah.
Um, the life and accidental death and dismemberment, they always throw in with this. We aren't obligated to do that one. I just put it in so you guys saw everything that I did. It doesn't seem, you know, it's an easy scratch off in my mind, just, cause it's not even that much coverage for for the premium.
Okay.
Short term, you get fifty percent of your pay.
Um, so there's limits on this stuff, so let's see here, for the short term. Short term, so it's sixty percent of your pay.
Sixty percent.
Up to a, up to a max of twenty five per week.
For six months.
Um, for for twelve weeks. And then after twelve weeks, the long term kicks in.
Yeah, if you're signing up for both. You have to sign up for both?
No, we don't have to, we don't have to offer them both.
We have uh on the on the insurance, if somebody gets hurt on the job or something, they have a certain amount of time they can get disability.
Well, I think that's what Jamie is saying, that's when work comp come into play. And I don't know what.
They get something for that.
I'm sure there's something to get. I think what happens in these cases is when, once the accident occurs, then it's figured out which, is it more.
Thank you.
applicable to a work comp claim or is it short term or a long term disability?
Well, I'm just curious, but I mean, I've I've worked in different places and I've seen different operations, how it works.
Okay, so, um, Tim, can you um do the MVP and then put that on our next meeting and then we can discuss this more and everybody can take this home and look at it and go over again and talk with any questions and send them to Tim, so he can be prepared for our next meeting with his answers. And then maybe we can make a decision that.
Always prepared.
I have one question, Tim.
Increase equals zero?
I wish.
Tim, on those insurances, is it a one time op, open enrollment, like one time a year?
Yes.
So they couldn't get on it now, would have to wait to the fiscal year when we.
Um, no, so because we're starting new, the way these could work is we could start coverage on January first.
Okay.
We work fast. But again, these are things that can be rolling, like we can do dental in.
How are we budgeted for that line item?
So remember, so this is all new, so none of this is budgeted.
Right, right.
So those are things that, right.
As far as changing, it's gonna be in.
Well, that's, which is totally fine, we could, we could, we could implement this July first, so it's going in the next fiscal year, I don't have a problem with that. I just think we gotta do something to entice employees.
No, I.
Potential employees.
Work on keeping our good employees. I I have no problem with that. I just, as far as how we're gonna, you know.
Cause it's not budgeted now at all and we are already.
Right.
You know, squeezing the budget.
I'm not going out calling and saying it for fifteen hundred a year, you.
Well, I could tell you, if we offer the free dental, we're still giving them pay raises. That's going to.
Well, that's true. No, that's true, but so is, so is every other potential employer.
Can can we, uh, I I also assume there's limits on the coverage, right? It's not, it's not unlimited dental for.
No, 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 there's, I sent all that information.
That's in here?
It was in the email?
It was in the email.
Packet.
Coverage lists and everything.
Yep.
I just don't remember all the numbers up.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, that's similar to an average plan.
Okay, are we good, guys? Can we move along? So town hall update. Is that Tim or Mike or both?
Not me in this time. I don't have a lot.
I don't either. It's been humming along over there.
We're, um, I don't know the sidewalks.
Only been a week, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, I know. It hasn't been too.
Sidewalks. I don't know, I don't think they've poured yet, but by the looks of it today, they're really close to pouring the sidewalks.
They got the roof put on the, over the vault.
Yep.
It's a full thing now.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a huge bunch of updates on that. It's um, some of the grading on the parking lot, you know, is, it's pretty much where it's gonna be.
Yeah, Dickie said it was done this morning.
You know, gotta do a little bit of final grading after they get the, after they get the sidewalks poured in there. I think they're doing the lower sidewalk at the same time, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so that they're done.
How it went.
Yeah, so the sidewalks will be all done. Um, we're still waiting on the pipe, which is whatever, so that we can do, there's some drainage that has to be done on the lower parking lot.
Yeah.
Um, so depending on when we get the pipe, the lower parking lot may not be done until, you know, ground freezing, I don't know, we're, and when we checked last, I talked to Joel a week or so ago. The answer, when he asked on where the drainage pipe was that we were getting is your guess is as good as mine, which, you know, not from Joel, from our supplier. That's, that's the answer that Joel got, was your guess is as good as ours when it's gonna be here, so, which is a problem everywhere.
Yep.
It's nothing, you know.
And obviously, everybody out there is aware of all the price increases and stuff. We are doing the best we can. And obviously, everybody out there is aware of all the price increases and stuff. We are doing the best we can. The guys are doing the best they can. We can't stop price increases. It's everywhere, just so everybody's aware of that. Do you have anything to add, Tim, on the town office?
I do not.
Okay. Moving along to public comment, if there's anybody out there, please raise your hand and remember to state your full name. Thank you. Megan?
Jim?
Jim.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry. My name's Jim Kosis, and I really, really, I'm at the point of I, I've got to apologize to my wife before I tell her that I'm going to go on the line and say something because I'm very confused now with this whole town office, and I thought you guys would have a little better presentation tonight, based on the documentation that was in the packet last month, or last week, or the last meeting, where it is showing an overage, okay? I appreciate, yes, we, we know that prices are rising, but if I remember back in March second, there was a ballot article that said that the town office building at an estimate of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Your paperwork now documents are saying we're over a million dollars. I, I know we need a town office, but something or someone is not being straightforward with the taxpayers. I'm not sure who can answer the question of, yes, we have to pay more because of prices, and we're going to go out there and ask you for more money. Be honest with us, let us know. I'm not going to wait until it's all done, and then you turn around and say, we can't do phase two. We should know this number now. We should know what's happening. If you need more money, ask. Don't, I'm afraid with a lot of stuff that's been going on, we're hiding the forensic. There's a proposal out there that we give a, a commission or a consultation fees to the lawyers. We don't know what is happening in this town behind the door of the town office. And I'm sorry, you may get sick of me, you may be disturbed at what I'm bringing up, and I'm here speaking for the people, and if they don't want me to speak, I'm willing to wait and have them call me, but just something is happening in the past two years that has really made me very disturbed on what's happening. And I'm, I'm, it was a nice project that's going forward. Yes, me, we may have needed an architecture, we may have needed an engineer, someone may have, should have come up and said, okay, let's do all this this way. But I'm just getting tired over the past year. I don't have time to watch you guys. Someone's got to watch. I'm sorry, but you guys are got to come out and say, is this, are we at a million dollars now based on the projection of the cost? Thank you very much. I'd like to hear that answer tonight. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Megan, is there anybody else?
So let's.
Oh, okay.
We answer or can't we?
No, I, I, I think we can answer, Tim. I, I think that we presented a cost analysis on last Thursday night that um, and I'm not going to debate this with you back and forth, Jim, we're going to answer your question, and that's going to be.
And we'll get move on.
If you want an answer, I'm prepared to give you an answer from Tim and my perspective. If you want to debate, if you want to debate this, if you want to debate this back and forth, we'll set up another time at another meeting, okay? So.
Appreciate it.
I think, I think we set up a cost analysis last week that was public information. So when somebody says we're hiding something, it ruffles my feathers.
Ninety-two.
We gave a cost analysis last week of the entire project. I think Tim has that broken down pretty extensively. And I don't think there's a single hidden thing in there. We had some contingencies put in there for some potential, maybe some cost overruns now that in the foreseeable future, we don't know. But as as far as that goes, our, our, our cost analysis that was, that was presented last week is an extremely accurate cost of where we are projected to be at the end of this project. Tim, is that, is that?
Very true, and it's broken into phases, and phase two is through the completion of the project.
And it's all in that, in that cost analysis that we presented last week, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
So over the amount, right now, we're at two hundred thousand overage. Possibly the money coming in from the historical society is twenty-five thousand. Not sure if the build-out is included in the estimates. We have another twenty uh, or contingency that we may not have to use. Where am I going to help pay for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's a shortage?
What does the school system do, Jim, when they're overrun different things? What does the SPSU do?
Raise the taxes.
I'm sorry, I can't answer that question in my capacities right now. I'm, I'm talking.
I guess where I'm, where I'm going to go with this, Jim, is, is if you, if you were really in a position, I think in March, I, I think I would challenge you to put a petition in to run for the select board and jump in here and see how easy this is to make all of this stuff happen. Make the forensic audit, make the forensic audit happen, um, if, because we're hiding something there. Make the town hall project stay right at eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars or whatever it was. I, I, because if it's so easy, jump right in both feet and have at it.
I'm not saying it's easy. I just want to ask the question, where am I, who's going to pay for this this year?
We, we are working the issue. We don't have a complete answer on that yet of what a number might be.
And our, our budget season, our budget season is coming up, and like I said, I don't want to debate this, so this is where I'm going to be done. Our budget season is coming up, and that's something that we, as a five-member board, have to work pretty diligently on to try to keep our costs for the entire town down for the best that we can do for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, Jim. Have a good night. Megan, is there anybody else out there in the public? Please raise your hand. State your full name.
Mindy Jo.
Mindy?
Mindy. Hi, this is Mindy Jo. How are you guys tonight?
Good, thank you. How are you?
I'm all right. I'm still chasing my tail, so I got homework either for me or you guys, I'm not sure who. But um, trying to get a hold of the person that purchased lot twelve, I finally made contact. However, he bought the place at a tax sale, and it's not in his name. And then I find out there's nine hundred ninety-nine dollars owed on, which has a new town water bill. I have no clue about sewer bill. Um, however, he did send, uh, since I sent him a lease, he didn't sign the lease, but he sent me two rent payments. My, my thing is this, it's an abandoned trailer with all this money owed on it. Um, and then, um, now I was trying to, I'm sorry, be patient. How is it not in his name, and is there a way to find out when that's to happen? Because he bought it, it's been over, oh my God, I believe he purchased it in two thousand and nineteen, before Harvey even passed away. It's still not in his name.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be Julie?
As far as the deed of record.
Well, yeah, and the listeners would have it, however, I don't, yeah, the deed would be in Ju- Julie.
I would suggest that you call Julie and ask her, because I believe that she is the one that has to.
Has to record it.
Record all the paperwork.
Okay, now, um, all right, uh, there was another question I wanted to ask you guys, because I'm just, like I said, I'm still chasing tails. It's like, I make two steps forward and I get thrown five steps back. I have not yet seen or heard, I mean, I heard from the listeners, have not seen them. Um, I didn't get an email out to Mike, it completely escaped my brain. I was hoping Mike maybe could have get back to me, because I've got so much on my plate right now, and it's overwhelmed as sure as you guys do too. Um, I need, my neighbor went and got a dumpster, okay? She forked it out of her own pocket, because it's just, we've got people still dumping things that don't be, need to be dumped. You know, and if I don't get it picked up, then we got still more dumping. And I found another pile of garbage down here, which I got to bring Fred down, because we have somebody here that's storing garbage behind their shed. So if Mike and Fred can make time to get down here so I can show them all this, and maybe they can tell them they got to do something, would be great.
Okay, Mike.
Mindy didn't, um.
I didn't email you, like I said, I just completely skipped my brain.
That's all right.
My dad, I got my, let me explain. I got my dad here, he's at Albany Med at the moment, okay? I don't know when he'll be returning. Then we had in the park, and you know, I have somebody else to just throw a cat out on the railroad tracks near my yard. Um, so, and then I've reached out to the person that had the fire to find out what's going on there, uh, two emails, no response. I, I'm just, I'm starting to get a little really overwhelmed, and I just, I somehow, some way, maybe somebody else's brain can help me figure out how to get from point A to point B. I, you know, I've been screaming for help, and I understand, I, I took on this responsibility, and it's one hell of a responsibility, but nobody seems to be on the same page. Nobody.
So I think a couple of things, Mindy Jo, um, you know, when you get the email, the Fred and I will, will do our best, uh, you know, as the best that we can for you. I'm going to be away next week, so um, just, I'm just throwing that out there. Um, Rebecca sent me a message just now. Did you, she emailed you some information? Did, she wants to know if you got that information?
I have not received anything from Rebecca.
Okay. Okay.
My, my email is my full name, but Joe is J O, no, no E on it, Mindy Joharington at Comcast dot net.
So could you, could you do us a favor tomorrow so that the information goes to the right place? Will you send an email just to, um, so that we have the correct email address to the?
Yeah, I've emailed.
Info at townapoundle.org?
I have sent many of emails at info and to you and to Ms. Rawlings, straight to you guys.
I'm trying to get Rebecca the right information, and she's texting me here, so um, if you could just send an email to info at townapoundle.org, it'll get to Rebecca, and she can get the email to you. It's about a grant.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
And then if you send the email to me and and to Fred and I, you know, we can certainly try to, like I said, I'm going to be out of town next week, I'm leaving Sunday. You know, we can, we can certainly get down there, you know, as soon as we can get together and get down there. You know, both of us obviously have a work schedule, so it's, but, you know, Fred and I have been coordinating back and forth on some other things. Um, or we're working on some stuff in town. Along with Megan's help, so you know, we, we certainly can can coordinate, so the two of us can find a time to get down there. And usually, what's been working for us is um, we've met a couple of times on a Friday at nine-thirty-ish, give or take, so um, you know, it, so it would be during the day usually. Just our work schedule, our work schedules happen to give us that time.
Oh, I completely understand that, and you know, and I know I sound like a wine ass, and I don't mean to sound like a wine ass, and I don't mean to be a pain in anybody's ass, but I know the potential that Burdick Park has. I remember what it was when I was a kid. It was a beautiful little park. You know what I mean? And I would like to see it get back there, but I, I seem to.
So would we.
I know, I know.
So would we. We're all on the same page there, Mindy Jo, I can guarantee you that.
I cringe going down into Alta, you know, because Alta's pretty bad too, however, you know, it's, it's just been let go for so long that it's going to take, you know, probably twice the time to clean it up. All right, working on it. So you have a safe travel, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you.
You all be safe and God bless.
Thank you. Have a good night, Mindy.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else, Megan? Please raise your hand, state your full name.
There's no one else raising their hand.
Okay.
Where we adjourn?
To have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I oppose. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.